So undoubtedly that.
Yeah. Are you able to fetch that?
My trap over there.
Thank you. Good timing, you came right at the beginning of select the public comment. So Paul?
Whatever.
You're up.
I'm just following up from what our attorneys have discussed with your attorney. And we were supposed to have an answer last Monday, but your attorney called my attorney and said he was gonna contact you this week.
And there was gonna be a meeting prior to the public meeting and we would hear here. We have not gotten that information.
Yeah, we just, we discussed the topic, I guess, with the attorney at the beginning of this meeting. And then our attorney was supposed to reach back out to you or tomorrow or something.
Email, so what is the answer?
The attorney has to talk with your attorney, I'm sorry, we can't, we really can't discuss in a public setting.
And I'm very confused of why it sounds like this big lawsuit or something when we're just asking to resolve a variance. I don't understand this, nobody can talk to anyone and...
It's considered an enforcement situation and so that's why it becomes, involves the attorneys for the town and your attorney as well. So our attorney's advice is we can't discuss it because it's in the attorney's communication going around, so...
Was it any understanding that it's up to the selectmen to make a decision?
That's what we were told.
Right, but our attorneys represent us.
So he makes a decision?
Well, the select board voices their concerns and their objectives basically to the attorney and then they follow what the select board decides, basically.
This is really getting ridiculous.
It really sounds...
We were given information...
They know the whole story, Paul, before it was...
Well, we're one foot nine inches, one foot nine inches above what it was when we demolition the building. All right, we have an offer on the table, we're supposed to close tomorrow, which we can't because this isn't done. And the only reason the lawyers are gonna get involved is because my attorney will sue this town because of what he did, period.
It's not what we want, it isn't necessary, and I don't understand what's going on. We brought it to the appeals and they said they couldn't do anything, we had to hire an attorney to get it resolved, it seems like...
If it's gonna go to litigation, it's gonna go all the way. It's gonna cost this town and the taxpayers more money than you probably wanted.
Don't jump to conclusions, hopefully that's not what's going on.
We pay enough in taxes, you don't have to deal with this.
Any other public?
Next is town manager report?
Oh, it's my turn already?
It is.
All right, well, hang on just a second. Um, like I mentioned before, we went over the budget last week, so I didn't send out the budget report this week, but again, everything looks to be going in the right direction and everything's falling within the limits.
Nothing outstanding that you noticed?
No, um, so everything there looks good. Actually. Um, so for the factor in Revell. So I finally was able to touch base with Rob from RJD Appraisals. I had originally put in the proposed budget that we talked about last week, an additional $10,000 in assessing because I just wasn't sure like where it was gonna fall. But he was able to give me an estimate of $5,000 and this would cover any additional extra hours days for both him and Ed, our current assessor, to come and do the factor around June slash July, so they would be basically doing the factor during commitment time and running all those numbers and so that is something I'm very glad to have off my to-do list now because I've been on there for way too long.
Right.
Then next thing would be the plow contract. Since my meeting with Chad, there has been zero complaints about the roads, so that's been pretty fortunate. And he has submitted all of his required documents, insurance, registration, all of that stuff to be compliant with the contract. One of the things that we discussed during our meeting was to, what's the word, I mean, like monitor, I guess, or observe his work for the next month or so before making a decision whether we want to extend or put it back up to bid, that way we can see some improvement and some dedication there.
Did we say it was until March first?
Well, March 1st is according to the contract, but then, you know, like once we talked to Chad, he was in dreams that we can go past the March 1st. He just doesn't want like October coming around and be like, hey, you wanna extend that contract? So I would, obviously, this is up to you guys, but I would say that we revisit this in April or even the March meeting when we can have a whole another month to say, yeah, you're keeping up the good work or something similar to that.
Yeah, I mean especially because we haven't had a lot of weather until today and then we're supposed to have another storm coming in. Today seems good, he was out, as I came down, he was out cleaning up the intersections and doing some of that work. So, you know, if we can see that, some consistency.
I actually had somebody come in and said, I don't know what you did to that plow guy, but I just wanted to come down here and say thank you. So sometimes hard conversations just need to be had. And then FEMA money. So I had a final closeout meeting with FEMA today, which to my surprise, that it was the final closeout because I had no idea what was even going on or what the next step was or any of that stuff. So then they called to schedule a closeout meeting, I'm like, what do you mean? Like I don't have any money, like I don't have, like how are we closing things out? And so now I get to work with MIMA, which is the state version of FEMA, to get the money. Because FEMA sends it to the state and then you have to work with the state to get your money.
Was it MIMA?
MIMA.
MIMA.
Yeah.
So do you have to start that whole process all over again with MIMA or do they just fork over money?
Well, the state never just forks over money. But I don't think that we have to start the whole process all over because the money has already been obligated. And so I do have actual real numbers. So it comes out to being $5,640 for protective measures, so like the fire department, there's some pump, that kind of stuff. $38,508 for roads and cross drain. And then $2,943 for management costs, for a total of $47,092.
What was it less for the, uh, $2,000?
$943.
And 43 for, I'm sorry.
Management costs, which basically pays for my time to meet with FEMA.
Enough?
Not really.
What was the total total?
Uh, $47,092.
Thank you.
Sure thing. And then the shoreline zoning ordinance, conveniently. So, um, hang on just a second. So I told you at the last meeting that it was submitted to DEP and they were going to write up this basically one-page thing that we have to attach to the shoreline zoning ordinance. But she then emailed me a question that I don't have the answer to and I'm hoping... This seems very straightforward, but I'm gonna read to you what her email says because, well, kind of. So basically, the ordinance that we just submitted has like a note section instead. And so it says like, note municipalities can enforce, may also include the following areas for which have been recommended for protection in the comprehensive plan of one municipality or otherwise endorsed for protection by the municipal legislative body. And then it talks about bird habitat. So it's in a note section, but it's not in the actual ordinance. But the old ordinance has the bird habitat, which we're using the old map. So the old map has the bird habitat on there. So if we want to include it in the new ordinance, we can. And then it will just be fine and we'll use the same map and everything. But if we don't include it in the new one, then, if the town does not want the bird habitat as a trigger, we may need to discuss further since this would likely include changes to the shoreline zoning map. I don't...
Say that last part again?
If the town does not want the bird habitat as a trigger, which...
Being part of the ordinance.
Right. We would need to discuss further since this would likely include changes to the shoreline zoning map. So I don't think we want to change the shoreline zoning map. And ultimately, the old shoreline zoning, and I think the reason why this was like missed, so to speak, is because it's in there, but it's in there as a note instead of an actual like piece of the ordinance, so to speak. So this has to do with resource protection and bird habitats being as one of the triggers. So it basically, she said, please confirm that the town wishes to include mapped bird habitat as one of the triggers for resource protection districts. And basically, the first insert below shows how the amended ordinance has this section set up with the bird habitat as an option, but not included in the list above it. So it's in there, but like not, we just weren't really clear apparently. So I think that we don't want to change the map and we should just include it and make it the same as how the ordinance was written before. And we got this ordinance from DEP, so...
Yeah, it's...
I mean, that makes sense in your resource protection.
Right. And it's already mapped out, it's like we've already done the work to include the bird habitat. It just didn't quite make it to where we thought it was. So I just didn't wanna go ahead and make that decision all on my own and say, yeah, sure, include the bird habitat without then explaining it to somebody else and be like, that makes sense, you know? Yeah. So...
I'm good with including that.
I mean, what would the light be without the looms?
Right.
Yeah, right. Did we have to vote on...
No, I just...
Do we have to lose the note into the regular text?
Um...
Or can we...
No, because she will just include it on her little one-page...
Perfect.
Okay.
Little, so we won't have to fix the ordinance right now, but when we do revisit it, we'll just add it, like that again.
Good.
Sounds good. Yeah, cool. Um, and that is all I had in my updates for town manager report.
All right, very good, thank you. Select board reports?
Um, I only had one piece of information and Sandra, or is Sandra still here? Sandra, if you can clarify, I believe you had said that the comp plan had been approved. Is that correct?
It is correct and it is on the town website. We got noticed last week that we were good.
Cause I happened to mention that and it caught people by surprise. So thank you, Sandra, for the work to bring that up to speed, something that could have happened quite a while ago. But you know, through your work, it got moved forward, so thank you for that.
It wasn't just me.
Oh, well, you spearheaded that. The making the edits to it to make it comply with what the state is looking for. So thank you for that and anyone else that helped you. That's all I had.
Ditto, ditto. All right, that's all you have? Okay, I just have some quick questions, bear with me. Looking over some notes from last meeting. And some of this is just asking, have we heard anything updates? You probably haven't because you would have included it, so bear with me.
Probably.
We talked about you and you probably haven't had time. You reached out to Dirigo Engineering regarding the Gully Brook Bridge? You had talked to Mike, I guess, at the county?
Yes, and we actually talked about that a little bit at the road committee meeting on Tuesday, which I forgot to talk about, but, um, and I have not been able to touch base with the person that Mike has used. But that doesn't mean that there's not somebody else there that can help me, so...
Okay, all right. We'll just keep it on our list.
Absolutely.
All right, very good. You addressed two of those things I was gonna ask about. Oh, we talked about, actually, there's a question for Kent. Hi, Kent in the office, in the office, in the audience. We talked about the application, the permit application process and about putting things in writing rather than verbal and then keeping the records in the town office. And how is that started, is that in progress?
I had one call, he wanted to be sharing a room, I said, yes, not a problem, but submit an application.
Okay. So, okay, thank you. And then we talked about recreation committee and the gym roof and doing a... Molly suggested having a donation bar, jar, I'm not talking right tonight, donation jar and a possible like thermometer to encourage. And I know, I just had to ask if we've done anything with that.
I've got the donation box, we're up to the gym. And I gotta talk with Jamie because he was gonna be working on that thermometer up there. See, I was coming on that.
Somebody said something about they'd seen something in progress.
We did meet last night, the gym committee. Yes, yeah. There is a thermometer, a paper thermometer that Cindy had that shows where we are and the... Yeah. And the money donated to date is $24,570.
Wonderful, wonderful, awesome. Yeah, I was envisioning like a big draw here.
Well, that's what Jamie's gonna make for up to the gym.
Okay, get people's attention.
Yeah.
Cool.
From the center.
Thank you.
Kind of related to that, there's a, I think the fire department's having a dinner on March 15th.
Right.
Boiled dinner. And that might be a good time to mention to people possibly donating, somebody up there suggesting it.
Yeah.
With a handout.
Now, I think the person that originally came up with that idea on the fire department was thinking more along the lines of having it go towards the gym roof.
Yeah.
But obviously, you know, that being a fire department thing, they should be...
Yeah.
I think ultimately, and I don't wanna speak for the fire department, but I think what the plan is, is to just advertise it as it goes to the fire department and then the fire department making the donation or of some sort to... So like a portion of what they raise or something like that to the gym roof is what I have been told up until this point.
Okay, that sounds good. All right.
I have a comment about the gym roof too. The collaborative has decided to put $5 for each sweatshirt sold toward the gym roof. So instead of putting it all under the collaborative coffers, we're gonna help support the gym.
Awesome, very good. Elena, you mentioned, we talked about getting a list together of town-owned properties and you haven't had time, just didn't want it to go off our list.
Like tax-acquired properties or town-owned?
Yeah.
I think it was more or less all, we were looking at, you know, possibly offloading some of these things that we don't...
Yeah.
Need.
Need.
Yeah.
And obviously, the town, the ones that aren't tax-acquired, we can actually make some money on.
I think it would be, yeah, the town-owned properties and then we talked about...
In general, so like ever, all of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Is that something you have to do tomorrow, but I just didn't wanna lose sight, you know? Sometimes we talk about these things and then we forget about.
Well, I definitely forgot about that, so...
That's all right. And then just, you haven't heard any more on the Girl Palmer DOT grant?
Um, no, actually, and I did reach out to Matt Dross today though, meant to say, okay, so we have now... At our last meeting, we asked for a final report or said your draft looks as good as it's gonna get or whatever. So like what do we do now?
Yeah.
And so I did reach out to him today.
Okay, all right, we'll wait, hopefully hear from him. Let's see if I have anything else here. Yeah, you haven't heard back from the attorney regarding the remote meeting policy, whether it applies to other town boards?
You know, now that you mentioned that, it was kind of an issue and then the issue went away. So then he never actually like, or maybe he gave his answer to Marty because Marty was kind of the one that was like, we need an answer right now because we're having a meeting tomorrow kind of situation. So maybe he did give her an answer, but...
Wanna check with Marty?
Yeah, I will.
Okay. And then we talked about the new main paid family leave and you were gonna make sure that it would be allowed for the town to cover the 0.5%? Am I reading that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yes, I did, and so it ultimately gets up to the employer. How, they can't make the employee pay the whole amount, but there's nothing that says that you can't pay the whole amount, so to speak. Because we're in the lower threshold anyways because we have less than 15 employees. So there's nothing that says that the employer can't pay the whole thing, it just says that you can't make the employee pay.
Or employee, right, right. Okay, okay, that was our question, the answer. That's all my questions.
All right.
All right, on to town committee reports. Cemetery, any updates?
Nobody's been buried lately. No, I don't have anything other than a fairly sizable tree fell in the cemetery, which you can see from the road, I mean, it's a big one. But the other thing I wanted to mention is that we met with the DEP on the foundation over there. I don't know if people have put it on this before, but...
You know, the meetings start to run together, so I can't really recall if I did or not.
Anyway, we met with the DEP and I think there's four of them there. And the guy that's proposed to do the work and everybody, I think at the end of the meeting, seemed to be on the same wavelength and you know what, you have to file for documents and...
Yeah, so we have to submit a permit by rule to DEP. I have to submit, as crazy as this sounds, a letter basically stating that we can't move it anywhere else on the property. So they just have to say we tried, basically. And so when it comes closer to doing the project, I'll submit that permit by rule and we can go from there.
Wow.
Yeah, so it looks like it should be reasonably smooth sailing on that.
Good.
Don't forget too, you're gonna need a permit from the town.
What's that?
Gonna need a permit from the town too, you can't just go by the permit by rule from DEP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Glenn. Sandra, any beautification or more collaborative information?
Nothing new on beautification. Collaborative, in addition to putting money toward the gym roof, we sold the artisan cottage, so that money, it's now not in the way, next to the Historic Society building and we have more money in the collaborative account. So that's about all there is there. Sue, you told me to remind you, if you forgot...
Yes.
About, so you are now reminded, feel free to back up and do that.
All right, let's back up. Sandra had, short-term memory here, had asked me on status of the lights at Robinsons. Ken, have you heard anything? Last meeting, we, it was mentioned that they were working on putting shields. Have you had any communication with them?
They have not talked to me, I have not seen them working on shields, but I will pay close attention when I drive by to see if they are.
Okay. Is, can you reach out to them and just let us know what's...
I can reach out, but that gets me nowhere.
Yeah.
But I will try.
Yeah.
And document it in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be contacted by writing a letter.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have a contact then.
No, because the only contact that I had was Val coming into the office and then she was texting somebody when she was in the office, so then she was relaying the information to me from the text messages.
So the manager of the store is, do we know?
Val.
Yeah, it's Val, okay.
No, she's not the manager.
Hmm, I don't know who the manager is.
But I can't think of what her name is.
Jamie?
Oh, you're talking about down Robinsons.
Yeah.
That I think is, I think Billy is like the maintenance?
He's in charge of the buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, building maintenance.
And that's who I've been addressing letters to.
I would, cause I, I'm pretty sure that Jim is still CEO of all of their stores. So he might be one to talk to.
So...
Cause Jim will get something done if it needs to be done.
Okay. You wanna try that, Ken?
I can.
Okay, and, yeah, cause I don't want it to drag on. At some point, you know, if you write the letter and have the documentation and nothing's done, just let us know and I guess we can address it. Keep us in the loop.
Every time I write a letter, I do the office a copy.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, Sandra, thank you.
While we're still on committee reports, I'm not the collaborative, but Chantel reached out to me earlier today and I meant to bring this up during my town manager reports, but I didn't write it down, so that's what happened. And they are applying for a grant to get the sculptures here, if I'm understanding correctly. And so she basically just needs approval to sign up for this grant because we're the backing for the collaborative. So she just basically needs to know that it's okay for her to apply for this grant.
Definitely.
Okay.
I, do we need a motion on that?
I don't really think so because we're not really like, we're not signing anything.
Right, yeah.
I just figured at least mention it and say, hey, this is what we're doing instead of being like, oh, by the way, we just got this grant that you guys didn't even know.
Right, right, right.
For the town, so...
Sounds good. Anything from rec committee? I know we have snow roller dates.
Yeah, well, I guess we can talk about snow roller a little bit. So we have gotten all the pallets and everything ready for the buyer and Steve and I will do that tomorrow. And maybe Jimmy.
All right, excellent, thank you. All right, on to CEO report. Do we have? Then we have, yeah.
So what can you tell us on 142 Indian Point Loop?
It looks pretty bad.
Do we have pictures or?
Of course.
See the walls are separating. There's a tree on the roof that's been there a while. No, no way. The chimney's getting kinda cockeyed. It's been quite sagging too. Of course, if we get fourteen inches of snow on Sunday, it might change the circumstance.
Is that 142 Indian Point Loop?
One of the pictures has got that on it. Yeah, 142.
Okay, I, I believe the numbers.
Yeah.
Ken, can I see that?
What is that on? Indian Point Loop?
Yeah.
The tree's been on the roof for quite a while.
Oh, yeah.
You see where the walls are separating?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, how long's it been vacant?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Chimney's getting ready to tip over.
Yeah, how close to the neighbors is that?
Well, it's not close enough, it's gonna land on anybody, it's right in the corner where the loops are out.
Oh, okay, okay, alright. And how about the old, um, the bait shop up on fifteen?
It's mostly tall.
Oh, yeah.
You see where the claws are separating?
Yeah, that one's pretty much, in the heap anyways.
Yeah.
But that'd be a good one to knock down and have the fire department burn.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Who's the, uh?
Which property is it on Indian Point?
Whose property is that, Ken, that?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I'd have to get that from Marty.
142 is Buster's.
That one I know, the old bait store I don't.
Oh, the old bait store, that's, uh, store.
But that's looking pretty bad.
Yes.
Not a lot left.
There's still quite a bit there, but I'd be afraid to go in.
Yeah.
Ken, could you, um, for your next report, um, kinda give us a list of um, cases or, or properties that you have been working on that aren't resolved?
I don't have any properties I'm working on at the moment.
Um.
Or anything that you have turned over to the select board that hasn't been addressed yet, is that?
Yeah, because like I'm thinking of the, um, dangerous building over on Tiny Hill, the yellow house. Um, I, it's been years and people are asking like, what's going on with that, and then just.
I have no idea, it's like, I thought the town was taking that one over.
Yeah, so that, that's the one that's like in the foreclosure process.
Right, right.
So we can't technically do anything about it right now and if we send a letter to them, they're gonna be like, okay, cool, you're gonna own it in a little while anyway, so what do I care?
So, yeah, so we just have to wait for that process to.
Pretty much.
Come out, okay, alright, um, okay, so there's none that, like, the old cell store, the demolition?
You gotta write him a letter because he got a demolition permit after the fact, but he never cleaned up and tarps aren't an approved siding material and.
Yeah, it's, so cases like that, if you could provide us just like the timeline, when you start and what's, what's the next step and when?
My next step is I have to write him a letter.
Okay, alright, then just put that in your report, because we need that, right?
Yeah, I talked, this, this, yeah, quite a while ago, I talked to his son, he was supposed to pass on the information, he goes, oh, I'm cleaning it up, but I haven't seen anything cleaned.
Okay. No, if you could just put that in your written report, that would be helpful for, for us.
Yeah, I was just about to start in on that one.
Okay, thank you. Um, so did you need us to kinda give you the go ahead on these two?
Yes.
Okay.
I remember right from legal affairs, dangerous, or buildings is, uh, you guys.
Yeah, right, exactly, um.
So I can't do anything else I'm told to.
Jessica, how are you feeling about those two, having him pursue those?
I mean, they both seem reasonable to pursue, um, at least start the, the process.
The process.
It's only the process.
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to take a look at them up close, you know, not that your pictures aren't good enough, but just really see.
Yeah, no, I, I don't blame you, I'm just starting it by showing you the pictures.
Yeah.
Okay.
And asking what you want me to do about it.
Right, I mean, I think the, the bait shop is.
The bait shop, the time you see that and just driving by, it's my man.
Right, yeah. Um, I'm not familiar with 142 Indian Point Loop, but I'm looking, I don't know.
Okay. So, yeah. I got it.
Start with the bait shop and wait till you guys look at 142 in person?
Yeah, because for some reason that ad just doesn't seem right to me, because.
Well, and like I said, there, there was, in, according to Trio, there, there was two 142
Oh.
Indian Point Loop, and they're owned by the same person, but they're not the same admin law or anything, and neither one of them, well, it doesn't show that, so I don't know.
So let's verify.
Yeah.
We got the right building.
At, at least the right person would be in it.
So, okay. Alright, very good, alright, on to old business, nineteen Center Street.
Um, as advised by the attorney to just hold off on this one?
Alright.
For the short term.
For the short term.
We have other things we are doing, alright, municipal building grant.
Um, okay, so I, since our last meeting, I took the tax map and went from one end of the village district to the other end of the village district to locate any piece of property or beginning to end that is empty. And then I went to look at all of these properties and the problem is headed out of town, everything on this side of the road is uphill and everything on this side of the road is downhill. So, a- and it's not just like a little grid, like it's straight uphill or straight downhill. So then, um, uh, like I said, I was gonna reach back up to Lorrimonio and I let him know like the transfer station was no longer an option or it wasn't really ever an option as a trade, because we need the transfer station. Um, so his counter offer was, um, seven hundred thousand dollars for seven acres, which seems a little steep to me, a hundred thousand dollars an acre seems a little excessive.
That's on the main road up there.
Yeah. Um, or he would swap for this building plus three hundred thousand, which I can't help but laugh a little bit. But, uh, so that doesn't really seem feasible to me either. Um, so right now, the option that I'm exploring is, um, behind the gym because it's land we already own, it's just getting access to this land.
Access.
So the Water Snore District owns, um, the, the leach fields off Water Street going that direction. And they own forty feet around the beds in one direction, so if we were to get, say like even like fifty feet from the Elliotsville Foundation and Libra, we would have enough space there to build a road that goes from Water Street to behind the gym.
And then, okay, wow.
So, that's what I'm exploring right now, if that option doesn't work, I am honestly at a loss as to what other places to explore. I did not, going into this, I did not think that the hard part of building in municipal building would be where to put it.
Yeah. There seems to be land.
Uh, no, just worth millions of dollars apparently. So, um, there is a piece of property like on the outskirts of town, like almost across from where the cemetery is on the Greenville Road. Basically where the Welcome to the Monson sign sits.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but that, like I said, anything on that side of the road is uphill, everything on the other side is downhill, that would be less uphill. Um, but ultimately, like, but I feel like behind the gym would be a better
Mm-hmm.
spot, so I'm trying to explore those options.
Yeah.
Um, first, yeah.
Closer, yeah. I'm, I'm just wondering though, if, if that's out of the question, if that other land on fifteen, um, if they could work it somehow so that
Right, right.
It's doable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be cheaper than seven hundred thousand dollars for seven acres, but. So that's where I'm at in that process and, um, I, I don't think upon talking with Libra, I don't think Libra is gonna say, no, you can't have fifty to a hundred feet of land behind this building, I think they would be willing to work with us. The Elliotsville Foundation people, I'm not a hundred percent sure of it, because I, I, I feel like we have a better market to be like, well, we only want like fifty to a hundred feet, not your whole property, so. And it's literally one pin that needs to be moved this direction a little bit, just so that we don't have, we're not basically building right next to, a building road right next to the silver.
Right, right.
So. Yeah, it's been interesting.
Thank you for all that, my work, though.
It's.
Other than the land thing, is the process receiving or is it just hung up?
Yeah, pretty much hung up there, because, oh, well, other than the, the initial like blueprint or whatever that he had given us, until he can like see the land and explore what it's going to look like, he's pretty much at a, a standstill.
Right.
Which is pretty great, but.
Isn't the application window soon?
It, it's supposed to open soon, yes, um, so
Yeah.
in March sometime is what, we were told originally, whether it, they might wait a little while, like, because nothing is posted yet.
Right, right, right.
They're giving any information as to when it's gonna open, so that's not unbelievable.
Yeah, I, I think there might be some things up in there.
Uh, well, yeah, I think you may be right there.
Um, right at the moment, so that doesn't surprise me that there hasn't been any, um, forthcoming information, I think, I mean, we, you know, you can only do what you can do, I, I can't think of any place I mean, we've explored, I feel like you've explored the majority of what's there, I mean, you can go well out of town, I know where there's some land, but that doesn't make sense, sort of town office to be five miles out of town.
Right, a- and then we have to look at, you know, uh, moving a fire station is, uh,
Right.
it affects people's.
Yeah, absolutely.
Insurance and all that stuff, the ISO and all of that stuff, but.
So you haven't heard back from, like, de- a definitive answer from Libra on any other?
Um, well, they definitely said no to the park.
Right.
They definitely said no, they, they want to see that remain a park. I personally feel like it would still be a park, but they don't take my feelings into consideration.
Yeah.
No.
But, um, yeah, they were like, pick, pick somewhere else, and like, you don't have anything else other than the piece on Homer Hill that is also straight up.
What about, um, they own the, the, uh, is that the two lots that are, as you leave?
I'm watching side.
Yeah, one of those.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I think it's two, isn't that, there's one, doesn't matter.
I think it's two.
Yeah.
I think it's two. So.
Maybe they wanna sell it more. Oh, I guess fire trucks won't go in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and that's just.
You know, I was just thinking, put something on our, our website, like, anybody have land for sale that?
In, in the district that, yeah. And really like, we were joking, if we could just like go this direction more, that would, that would help, obviously, we can't do anything right here, we just of the, of the area.
I mean, you could move the fire station back into the museum building, yeah, just kidding. They already have the hose tower.
Yeah, yeah, I think the foundation might.
And the floor is still spare.
Yeah. Does that have a, does that have more issues than this floor over here? It still has a, uh, the, the pumper though. Have you seen that pump?
No, I haven't.
Four stroke.
Oh, yeah. Well, Alina, thank you for your efforts on that and.
I'm trying hard, yeah, and.
So, oh, I was gonna ask, I'm sorry, so are you gonna kinda follow up on this part with Elliotsville and?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would that be sacrificing the ball field area? Would that be? Yes, I, I mean, probably, uh, my thought on it would be, you know, you could potentially move the ball field towards the bat, I, I mean, because it's not, the ball field isn't used like it used to be, there's no you know, teams anymore, no, school's gone, you know, obviously, we don't wanna take something away from the younger generation in town looking for someplace to play ball.
Right.
But maybe we could just relocate it somewhere on that property if we're already cutting and clearing and.
So, what we need to do is buy another piece of property, make a ball field, just kidding. Um, no, I, I.
No, we'll just put it right here so that, you know, all the kids can play and traffic.
I, I think there's some, some potential there, I mean, the, the ball field is in pretty rough shape, I was just curious, more than anything. Um, and it doesn't get used, so I, I can see.
We would have to find a new location for fireworks.
Which ultimately that falls to me too, so I would figure that out.
I know.
We could just get a town barge.
Uh, so let's say do.
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
Sure, yeah.
But there's enough room behind there if we wanted to have a ball field?
There, there's.
I mean, I.
That piece of pro- property.
Yeah.
Supposedly, is sixteen acres.
Okay.
So, there's.
But, there's also a lot of that, that beyond the ball field which you see that
Yeah.
isn't buildable.
Okay.
It is wetland.
Wetland.
But, that, I think the ball field's gonna be at least six or seven acres, the ball field itself.
I would think so, yeah. What, is the land behind the ball field, is that wetland or is that?
It is wetlands going towards, going north.
Okay.
And also going east, it turns into a wetland.
The Snowville Trail goes by there.
Yeah.
Yes.
A few feet from the ball field.
Yeah, and that right along, because if you go down the Snowville Trail here, up, that's, you can kinda see the wetland.
Yeah.
That comes up through there.
Yeah.
Everything that runs down from the quarries out there down, a lot of that's considered wetland.
Yeah.
Which if the cattails die off, they won't call it wetland.
Agricultural land.
Alright, good luck.
Thanks, I'm gonna need it. But I haven't given up yet, so.
Appreciate that. Alright, on to new business, um, budget committee members?
Um, like I said at the beginning, uh, I only have three members signed up right now, so if we want to just table this until the next time we meet, which um, not ne- our next scheduled meeting is not until March, but I anticipate that we will have to have a special town meeting, a, a special select board meeting at some point.
Okay, before then.
Before then, so we can just address it then. If not. If not, I guess we can hang out for three minutes some random day to appoint budget committee members.
Okay.
I will keep the twenty-seventh open then, um, if you're safe.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have signed up already?
Um, Sandra, uh, well, actually, now we have four because John, not, it's Stacy, so we have, um, Sandra and John Montworth and Justin Thomas and, um, his wife, so.
Did he already, he agreed to it?
Yeah, he came in today and told me.
What, what about like, uh, Dawn?
Well, I was hoping that I would have heard from her, but I haven't yet, so I'm.
Do we have, do you have a contact for her?
Yeah, I, I have an email, but I didn't email her.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I, like, I would encourage that only because she's, maybe she doesn't wanna do it anymore, but she seems, um,
Done. Right.
like a, a good person.
She's always been on that.
Yeah.
Who was that?
Dawn.
Dawn. Say, have you heard how she's, have you heard how she's doing as far as her site is saying?
Not good.
She did have, she was saying she is improving a little bit, she has a new doc down there, um, some other treatment, still, yeah, frustrating. Okay, um, so we'll keep that open the last Thursday in February.
Okay.
And, uh, all right, registrar appointment?
Yeah, so, um. One of the things that we learned about is every odd year, you have to reappoint your registrar even if you're not changing it, so you just have to reappoint Marty as registrar of voters.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yes, yeah.
So I can motion, um, I just need to raise this.
Uh, you can just say you make a motion to appoint Martha Gagnon as registrar of voters.
I make a motion to appoint Martha Gagnon as registrar, registrar of voters for the town of Monza.
I will say.
For twenty twenty-five.
Anymore?
No.
All right, I'll suck it, um, all in favor?
Is this one of those things that hasn't been done in the past?
Yeah.
I don't remember. How did you know? You don't know to do something until somebody tells you to do it.
That means that you can consume fraud for every.
And then, so when the, um, the shoreline zoning ordinance got back to me, on the third, first page, it literally says, this ordinance is not valid until accepted by the DEP commissioners, and I'm like, if I had just read the ordinance, I would have known that it was supposed to go to the commissioners, but I just apparently skipped the first page or something, not that the shoreline zoning ordinance is something that you take as a bedtime story, because it's very, but I was just like, she sent it back to me the other day and first page, and I was like, how did I miss that?
It wasn't in the golden red.
No, and it was two years ago, so I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, we're, we're maturing.
That's right, we're learning every day.
All right, the next one is Melissa, miscellaneous, anything miscellaneous?
Uh, give me a second.
I got a question there, have you heard anything from the solar guy about reconciliation for the past year or?
Yeah. No, I haven't, and so I had reached out to him a couple of months ago when we first got internet down there, and he never responded or anything. So I sent him an additional email that said, hey, by the way, we got internet down there as you requested, and also said that it was in the contract. Ken, how do we move forward now? And I haven't heard back from you, so.
May wanna stop paying the bills.
Yeah, well, you would think that would encourage somebody to reach out to you, but I've tried that in the past, and we went like six months without paying him, without realizing, and he still never reached out to say, hey, why aren't you paying bills or any of that, uh, and we just found out that we weren't paying them. Cause I didn't even, it was when I first got here, and I didn't even know that we had, it was even a thing down there, so then when we weren't paying it, I had no idea, because I didn't know we were supposed to be paying it.
Yeah.
But he never reached out to say, hey, why are bills not getting paid or anything like that, it was me that reached out to him and said, hey, are we supposed to be paying you? And he said, oh, yeah, you're behind six months, I don't. Is that anyone?
Well, we try that again, when he says you're behind six months, we say, well, I sent you an email six months ago, and you didn't respond, so.
Two emails, actually.
We were done with that.
Right.
Like, surely they owe you money.
Well, I, I'm.
Is there a phone, um, phone number or?
Y- yeah, but in the past, when I, i- he only responds to emails, and obviously not that, so.
Right.
I'm very curious of how the dialect and conversations went, um, before, when this initially like became a thing, because I'm assuming that in the beginning, it was this new and shiny thing for him, and now that it may not be working in his favor.
I'm sure that's what it is, I mean, the same with all of this solar stuff, you know, these companies, same with the heat pumps and everything, these companies say, oh, yeah, I'm gonna get into this, make all kinds of money. They do the install, and then when it comes to problems, they just kind of kick the can down the road, because they don't know what to do or how to do it. I know down to the field house, I think they had to bring in an outside person to figure out that solar that they put on.
Yeah, good, I would really like to know, like, are they working to the best of their ability, or are some of the panels not working at all? Any of those things, and it hasn't been addressed, like, he, before, he was like, you know, I can't hook up to it because I don't have internet, so I don't know.
I don't know if you can tell how it's working by looking at the CMP bills?
Um, well, actually, so the last month, the transfer station was like two hundred dollars, which
That means they're not working at all.
Right.
Well, pretty much not at all.
Right, because the transfer station is the one that is supposed to.
Gets the first.
Right, exactly.
Is it draw direct? Like, do, like it?
The transfer station, yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is not net building, this is, the net building, this is direct.
For the transfer station.
Yeah, yeah, um, I was gonna ask, do you need, it sounds so frustrating, do you need us to, I mean, I'd be willing to sign a letter to this guy saying, we have not heard from you, and we need to know what's going on, and what we're being billed for, and, and what we're getting.
And, yeah, and what we're getting, and if, you know, if these panels are bad right now, when we take them over, when it's time to take them over, if they've been bad for ten plus years, like, how, how is?
Right.
That's not.
And that's probably what we're just taking all of it.
So what they're thinking is.
Decommission on them.
Right.
Incur that cause.
Right. So.
So, I'm, I'm thinking maybe it's time for us to get a little heavy-handed and
Yeah.
reach out to this guy in writing, and maybe that'll.
Send it with the check, so then he, you know, gets it, he cashed the check, then.
Or call us, and then we'll send you the check.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna put that back on my to-do list.
Okay.
If you want me to, I'll take a look at the CMP bill and see if you can tell.
Yeah.
Is being generated.
Yeah, if you want to do that.
I mean, I think they bill you for twenty-three hundred kilowatt hours a month, whatever it actually produces.
Mm-hmm.
And if it, and if you're gonna build for the transfer station, it's not producing hardly anything.
Right, well, and I, I know that when we looked, um, I think it was last year, the, the February and March, there was ultimately nothing, really, last year either.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I don't remember getting a bill for like two hundred dollars from the transfer station, and, yeah, is that billing there, because?
Yeah, I saw it somewhere in here, it was like, solar municipal, uh, two fifty-four forty-four.
That one is to nine nine seven solar, this one would be to CMP.
Oh, okay, oh, so central main power. So Jim, um, Jujujim Hall, communication to the transfer station one ninety-eight?
Yeah.
And change?
Yeah.
Okay.
So ultimately, that one. And there's, we're open two days a week.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
All right.
Go ahead and, Lena.
All right, I'm.
Then let us know if you need us to do a letter or something to.
Okay, thank you.
Send what's the break, like?
My middle name is fierce, huh? All right, um, the last thing on the agenda is the personnel policy.
Yeah, and like I said, um, we I asked my question to Gray, and I guess he's gonna.
Ask somebody else that knows.
Yep, um, and then get back to us, but what, what are your guys' thought, like, what are you thinking that you want to do?
I mean, looking at what other towns around us do, I mean, it doesn't seem unreasonable, like, the, the model in Dover, whether it stays at eighty-twenty, but the fact that if you put your kids and your husband on the policy, it goes to you pay a hundred percent, it, it seems unreasonable to me, um, and not what we, how we wanna treat, uh, people that we value, um, or people in general, I suppose, just people.
Yeah. Hmm.
Um, but especially people that, that are, you know, valuable to the town, but we're, we're not really showing that, um, or anyone.
Yeah, and especially when, you know, it means that you can take home two hundred dollars a week, because you have to cover insurance, that's just not humane, and you know, I just think the benefits should, should be, um, supportive if, if our salaries can't be of a living wage, a living.
And I think there were several towns that it would, like, don't cover families, but they, they don't.
Yeah, so Milo and Tangerillo don't cover families.
Right, I, it, it, those.
All towns which have lost people over the years and.
Right, lost.
I mean, and, and we've been in, in a situation where it hasn't mattered really to the, to the bottom line for the past several town managers, um, because they didn't have families, so there's nobody to put on the insurance, but the fact that, um, that that's the case now, um, I mean, I, I would like to see us cover a, a, a significant portion of that, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a ridiculous ask or, or, I, I think it, it's an investment in.
I don't either, maybe. It's an investment, yeah.
I think.
I agree, um.
And I have no problem going to the town and saying that.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll back you up. Ideas?
As far as like the numbers, I do like the fact of having something straight across the board.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Can we say ninety across the board, ninety percent? Is that unreasonable?
Um.
Do we know what, what that would be?
I could give you. I was just gonna say, I can give you a, a budget number.
That would be good.
Well, for me.
Oh, thank you, it's the second one, yes, it's just a.
And is it only impacting you?
Well, if we do ninety percent, um, across the board, it would affect Marty as well, cause she just got insurance a few months ago, um,
Okay.
And I also, I don't know if this is gonna be an issue, but my luck has not been very good lately, so I just thought of it. We're technically not getting offered insurance for the first time, and it's not open enrollment, and I'm not a new employee. I don't know if they're gonna be like, sure, you can sign up now, or if they're gonna say, no, you get to wait till whenever, or whenever they're opening enrollments, so.
Yeah, that's a good question, I know I went a year without insurance because I made a mistake when I lived in Colorado, and
Yeah.
I, I missed the, the window for a new hire to get insurance by a day. But I wonder if we are changing the policy, if that falls under, like, it's a question for.
Yeah, yeah, so that, once we have a decision as to like what we want to offer, I'm gonna reach out to them and say, hey, this is what the town wants to do now, and then, um, see about that, but I just thought this yesterday.
Lena, do you know when open enrollment ends?
I know that they have one in November, but I don't know, some people have like one again in April, and like April and November, but I don't know what they're
Yeah.
I mean.
And it doesn't.
So how, how would they work that, say, if a business started up in January, you, you get to sign up?
They would be considered new employees.
Okay, so we're just.
We could fire her and hire her back, right?
Right? How much?
I, I would think that a major.
Might have to give her severance.
I would.
Yeah.
I would have a hard time believing that a major policy, town policy change wouldn't impact that, but what do I know? Like.
That's usually what I say, what do I know?
So I, yeah.
Yeah, see, this is, it doesn't say anything about open enrollment or anything on here, but this, cause this is just like a summary of the benefits, but, um, let me try to give you guys a, a realistic number here.
I mean, even if it's a, a, a general idea, like.
Cause I do kind of like the idea of having somebody with a family as important as somebody without a family, cause obviously, somebody with a family is bringing something else to the community.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. I mean, maybe it's a circus, but they're really, um.
Something.
Something.
Yeah. It's, it's a shift.
I mean, we would be discouraged and pain.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, it's a shift in mindset as an employer, you're, you know, rather than just focusing on the bottom dollar, you're focusing on the investment of the individual that you're hiring, and I go for that option.
Yeah.
Cause in the long run, we do better.
Right.
So if you guys paid ninety percent, and myself and Marty were on the plan, it would be like forty-five thousand dollars a year, which seems a little crazy to me for health insurance, but. And then if we did eighty percent, it'd be like forty thousand.
So I'm gonna say five thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. What, what's the current, when currently is the town paying?
Well, right now, you're only paying eighty percent of Marty's share, so.
Right. Yeah, I guess that's comparing apples and oranges, because you would be on it too, and.
So right now is twelve thousand. So, the, the family is significantly more, because it, it goes from
Yeah.
you know, twelve hundred to twenty-eight hundred. And then.
Do, and, and Gray's gonna answer the question, how we go about changing the policy, whether, like, does it take a vote of the town to change that, is it a?
I don't think.
Yeah, it doesn't go for the town, I think it's, it's, it's us.
Okay. I, I mean, I, to my mind, it's completely justifiable, I don't know if it's eighty or ninety, the fact that Dover is ninety-ten split, and, and the town pays the ninety, the employee pays the ten, across the board, and, uh, like, I, and then several of the other towns around it that have those similar splits, um. I mean, I think it's totally justifiable.
Lena, was there anything else, we, we seemed to focus on that, on the personnel policy last time, but is there anything else that, um?
I have not had the chance to like, but I know that we do need to address like the, like I mentioned before, the contribution to
Work, to be.
to main purse, changing that from, uh, what is it, they say like three percent or some, something like that, but main purse tells you what you're contributing, like, you don't just decide.
Right. Right.
So the fact that we have it in our personnel policy is a little bit confusing because that's.
We should almost reference, like, in like that it's whatever their.
Right. Exactly, and their, their rates change yearly, so.
Right.
We should say something along those lines. And then, um, I guess, you know, if Gray is gonna actually look at our personnel policy and see about changing it, maybe he will look at it and say, also.
Yeah.
This, this, and this needs to be changed because it doesn't make sense or.
Yeah, there were times, there were some contradictions in there.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so I haven't had a whole lot of time to sit down and really like go page by page to see.
Yeah, Family Leave Act.
Yeah, and that was another piece that I wanted to, um, touch on, because the Family Leave Act is in there, but it doesn't talk about the new. One that now we're all paying to and all of that stuff, so like, that's not in the personnel policy at all.
Right, right.
But, yeah.
So that needs to be updated.
So that needs to be in there too.
So I'm just thinking in terms of, can we update the personnel policy as soon as we have an answer on insurance? And then go back and update it, um, so that's official for the insurance part for the insurance company.
Right. Right.
But then go back in and update the other parts that are needed later?
I mean.
We can update it, yeah, a few times.
If we change that and we're covering more on the insurance end of things, do we have the funds to, to move around to cover that amount? Somewhere in budget?
Surplus.
Yeah, I, I would think so, because we do have some money in the benefits line there already, um.
But in the short term, I mean, do we have a way to pay for it and then through the Budget Committee this year, we can discuss that specifically.
Yeah, I think we could figure it out, because, um, like, like I said, Marty just got insurance, so like, ultimately, there hasn't been a whole lot paid out of. The benefits line this year at all.
Right.
So for the next, you know, four or five months, I think we could figure it out.
Right.
So. Um. Yeah.
So our next step would be, um. Finding out about the open enrollment piece.
Yeah.
And we're gonna go from there.
And what portion you guys, eighty or ninety?
I prefer ninety, but I'm, I'm just me.
I.
It doesn't.
I prefer benefits over pay.
I know.
You know, that's always a big, a key selling point to nine percent of people looking for jobs.
Well, yeah, I mean, like I said, I never thought that I would be. Forced to choose a, a job for the health insurance and then to. Make two hundred dollars a week because I have health insurance, that just seems crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I also don't think that, um, health insurance should be a second mortgage, but that, that's apparently what it takes.
Yeah, it should be.
Um, and I don't have a, a strong feeling either way, I mean, I, I, I don't think five thousand dollars is a, a sticking point. I don't think eighty seems unreasonable, ninety seems fine as well, so I'm fine either way.
Okay.
Like, I don't have a strong feeling about it, I think we should be paying, uh, a significant portion of it. If we want to keep in it, if we want to attract and keep, um. Good people.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, you know, they gain experience and then. Move around.
Yeah.
Potentially, so I think, I, I, I mean, I think it's.
Or they get second jobs and can't focus, you know.
Right.
Here and, yeah.
Right.
Attention here, which has happened in the past.
Right.
Right.
And I think that there was probably a reason why it went in the other direction at the time, but I, I think. If we value people that make the town work, then we need to pay for people to make the town work.
Comments?
I think.
Yep. Alright. So.
Okay.
I guess we need answers from Gray before we can.
Gray and, and the, um, insurance company?
Yeah.
On that, okay.
Is that an MMA question, like, do you call them?
Yeah.
Okay, and then I would say in terms, I just, you know, in terms of timeline, if you need us to meet sooner than the twenty-seventh. Just let us know.
Okay.
So we can.
That's, that's sort of what I was getting at when I asked about money availability.
Right.
Because even if we had to make a short-term decision, um, like, I would hate to, to think that Elena and her family will be without insurance.
After this month, right.
After this month, and we have done nothing to address that, and so if it's a case of reimbursement and, and we need to, to. Come up with a short-term solution.
Right.
Then let's do that, so that there's no gap.
Yeah.
Cause that's a scary place to exist.
Yeah, yeah.
It sure is, especially with kids.
I went a year after I was diagnosed as a type one diabetic, I went a year with no insurance, and it was the scariest year of my life. Because I needed insulin and all the supplies that went with it, and luckily, the doctor that I was working with kept me with samples.
Yep.
And she saw me at, because it was, it was a teaching and, and an educational. It was associated with the University of Denver, and so she was able to. Still see me and still provide me with insulin, but it was, um, it's a frightening place to exist.
It, it isn't.
Cause it doesn't change the price of medical care if you don't have insurance.
No. No, it doesn't, and, and it, it stops you from the, like, the, seeing the allergist yesterday.
Right.
It stops you from being able to see some of these specialists that you absolutely need and.
Right.
Like, those specialists want their, their money that day. They're, they're not interested in sending you a bill or any of that stuff, they, they wanna see that.
Yeah. So, yeah, if you get answers to those, let's, let's meet and get at least something, even if it's a, a temporary solution.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Awesome.
Alright, um. Alright, so. Be flexible in terms of when we'll see each other next.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else?
Uh, I feel like I'm missing something, but I'm not seeing anything, so.
We will see each other soon.
We'll see each other soon.
We haven't heard anything from, from Gray regarding the solar program.
Alright, um, have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, we're adjourned at seven thirty-four.
Wow, that was our fastest meeting yet, I think.
It's surprising.
In the spirit of John Jesus.
Right.
Very.
Hey, I heard there's a, a fundraiser, he's gonna, like, he's shot.
Oh, is there?
I've heard that too, yeah.
Twenty seconds, I think.
Yeah.
I heard that he's.